United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Next is public comment. We do have an item on the agenda. Item eleven for the public hearing. If the comments are in relation to the public hearing on the application for a flat on Copper Creek, you can save your comments and be able to give and take information. We'll go back now to the first of those two. Number four, let's see, oh, well, number two, public comment. Jeff Perry, do you wish to comment this time?
No, I would like to comment on the Copper Creek.
So you'll wait until that item then. So can the rest of you that signed up? Dealing with that, let's go, since the public hearing starts at nine o'clock, we'll go to item eleven. Public hearing, application for revised flat on Copper Creek. State subdivision unit one locked on.
As part of the statutory requirements for a revised flat, there has to be a public hearing which gives people an opportunity to voice any comments regarding the revised flat. So that's the purpose of the public hearing.
And, see, is there anyone who wish to comment on the revised flat this time?
Um, Jeff Perry, basically, we just kind of wanted to understand, me and my neighbor here, why the revision of the flat and if it was due to what we're hearing, was the drainage easement change? Our properties are adjacent downstream of that drainage on that. There's already problems with water drainage on the properties already. And it's our understanding that there is, the drainage easement was filled in, natural occurring pond was filled in, which would be in violation of National Permit Forty-One, without, you know, proper permits from the EPA to do so. So we just kind of wanted to understand the drainage easement and what was changed about it before they went ahead and did a revision to it.
Could you explain?
The Drake, the revised flat was done because a hole was built in the drainage easement. And so they were required to do a new drainage study to show that there would be no impact to adjoining properties. And that drainage study was done and submitted to the contract engineer that the county has a contract with, CDC, and it was reviewed and given a favorable recommendation. So they were allowed to redelineate the drainage easement on their lot. And that drainage easement, all the changes to the drainage easement were just on that one lot. And the flat is right here if you wanted to see it.
Sure. Does it show where the improvements are or is it? Were the improvements to the house worth in relation to the old drainage easement?
It's not going to show it on the flat.
In the study, do you have a copy of the study? Is that like a public record?
Ah, you can stop by the office and look at it or you can request it.
Because I don't remember anyone coming after our property to look at how this would affect our property. Or I've been attending the study there. Because I mean, right now, if we get a decent rain, our backyard, minus some four foot of water. And it's, we're three lots down from here, so water runs this way, fill up into what was kind of like a natural occurring pond there.
But there was nothing changed.
Nothing was changed?
Nothing was changed.
It shrunk.
It shrunk.
It shrunk. That's what we're, it didn't affect nobody downstream. That it was never done correct to begin?
So we're just trying to understand, make sure, because I know water runs through this property, keeps flowing through the other properties and down to ours, and then when we have a decent rain, like I said, it's.
I got a question, and what was not done correctly?
Definitely the drainage.
No, there is a pond there that was filled in.
Who filled it?
MNES.
MNES?
Of the lot filled that tank in. That's why there was an easement there, landscape gap.
Ooh, did you know that?
That's why that was the whole purpose of an easement, and Mr. Gimler was also a developer with us on it, that's why the whole purpose of easement was there.
And that's why they put, brought in another engineer, and he'd done the survey, and he said that it was overkill. It didn't have to be that big. It's right there, two engineers, even, even the county's engineer.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, there was a tank there, and that's what he's, he's getting at. That was considered an original flat, that was the purpose of the whole easement. This drainage study was given to my engineer, the original engineer of the subdivision, who Mr. Gimler hired as well, and he, he wouldn't sign off on. And he recommended it not, so, I mean, ultimately, it's whatever the county wants to do, but it is in violation of a restriction, but I have no say because I'm not a landlord there.
Right, it's also in violation of National Current forty-one, so, I mean, see, I was actually, it's up to the county. That's basically what I'm commenting on, just to make sure we voiced our opinion on it, on the matter.
Can I ask who filed MNES to do it?
Whoever the original owner was.
And that wasn't disclosed.
MNES is just a landscape, at that point. So why did he come in and do that?
The original, the original owner of the property, assuming.
And that wasn't disclosed to.
It wasn't disclosed to the new buyer.
But yet he's being penalized for it.
I have no idea.
But that's what you're saying, he's getting penalized for something that wasn't disclosed then selling.
Something shouldn't disclose it that much, I mean, this isn't like our, ultimately, there should have been a survey.
Obviously.
On the survey, it should have shown an easement.
Okay, but if you're the owner of a piece of property, when it comes, when it comes time to sell, the owner of the property should disclose any, anything that's been to the new owner.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
So now, so now, the new owner is being punished for something he didn't know about, correct?
A surveyor should have caught that when they did a survey, and then if there was an informed survey done with the house, it should have, somebody, somebody should have caught, I'm not saying it's all his fault, I agree with that, it should have been disclosed somewhere, but, but ultimately, the point is, there was a tank there, it was filled in by the original owner, and that's just the way it is, and I want them to move into their house, I think. Also, when there's, when there's a drainage problem, I'm the guy that does the phone call, so I need to make sure that it's done.
You've got a gentleman saying there's four foot of water on the rains, we were just out there when it had three inches of rain, there was no, none of this property. So where's the four, where is the four feet of water coming in?
Didn't y'all just get a whole bunch of rain out there like we did?
We just had three inches.
We had three inches of rain.
We haven't had three inches.
Hold, hold it, everybody, just a second, this is a public hearing. Now, we're set to rule on this, the information is coming from all different directions, and it's catchy and whatever. What I'd suggest is for y'all to meet together, see if you can come to some, some kind of conclusion without having courts involved in it, the attorneys involved in it, or they're the only ones that's going to make anything out of it. As a matter of fact, you can all move outside and meet and discuss it now, and see if you can come back with a recommendation to the court, or we can table it. But arguing with no facts to back it up or whatever at any time is not going to give us any work. So do y'all, would y'all like to step out and, and discuss it and come back and whatever, or table it and have time to meet?
I have no objection to what y'all choose. I was, I was asked to just voice the opinion, why I refuse to do it, and that's why.
I, I guess the gentleman back here with.
Basically, I have no objection to what y'all choose, as long as, you know, I don't end up with water in my house, at that point.
And I have, I have no idea. We got some things in.
Like I said, if, if it truly is not going to affect us, we're just here to kind of learn today, so I don't know what any other way to get the information other than to show up here, so if, if information is good information.
If prior to that hadn't been used, had four foot of water, you're probably going to be worse, even worse off.
It's happened twice, and I've lived there four years, where we had three to four feet.
So what I'm saying, though, if, if it hadn't been before, you'd probably be worse, no worse off now than you was then, so, you know, whatever you think. But we'll take anything you.
You know what, I mean, other than that, you got the study, they're saying their study wouldn't pass. If I end up with water in my house, yeah, there's going to be a lawsuit on someone, whether it's the county or I wouldn't probably take it to the landlord, there really had nothing to do with it, all I did was buy the property the way it was, right, so.
I say that's what I'm trying to get enough information, we don't want anybody to be in a lawsuit, whether it be the county or anybody else, that's it's foolishness for lawsuits to occur whenever it can be a verdict, you know. And that's what I say, y'all want to discuss this before you, or you? This is in prison court.
Yes.
The commission, why don't you?
Not here.
Yeah, he's not, he's not here.
Did he, did he, would you, what his views are?
Oh, he said he's in, in favor of the project.
Do it on item one, subdivision, Copper Street, the state unit one locked on, re-plant, review and approve. Motion, Commissioner Fowles, approve. Second, commission will comment, all in favor? Okay. While we're on eleven, we just want to go ahead and complete this case. Item two is temporary water line, EOG resources, precinct two, County Road two forty-six, and EOG resources precinct two, County Road two forty-seven, information only. Item three would be pipeline pumping permit, A, permit ninety-three, home store operating LLC precinct two, County Road two oh six, review and approve, motion, Commissioner Fowles, second, Commissioner Gimler, all in favor? And item B is permit ninety-four, home store operating LLC precinct two, County Road two oh seven, review and approve, Commissioner Fowles, all in favor? Obviously, following item eleven, we're doing number four. Public hearing, courthouse annex one, two, three, update, comments and questions.
Anyone comment question, if not, we'll all.
Big update, I think, this is great. There's some media work on the, it's most of us, we found on the sand, that was buried under, attributed dirt on the side of the, where the, the old cafeteria was, so they're removing that, in that whole neighborhood. And as part of the state requirements for the old courthouse, we're looking at, do a survey of the property there and to get that quality to be safe, so the process is there now, where else is moving on? And there's going to be more worship buildings out, mostly, old wing, that's going to be the, the clerk's office on that side is mostly all cut in now, so it's time for plumbing back in and getting the roof in since, so they're moving it pretty quick, which is great. They've actually made us see on back street, all that, because there's been, there's been movement there now. Where quality is, by the way, I turned up that one day, I thought something done blow over the top side of it. That's all looking good, so they'll be ready to start forming that up and pouring, pouring, retaining more shore, keep that short path, but if you see anybody walks back, they can see this extensive amount of the park that will be gaining on that street. So, anyways, just taking it on nice streets, it's going right.
Any chance we'll be through for one of these hours? On this owner's agent, Ms. Mason, over to you to do a minute?
Just to give us approval, and what we do is, as part of the supplemental for the Texas Department of Vice, of Act of Review for the ADA review, so what it does, it puts us in a state of contact directly with, this approves us, contact directly with the ADA folks, for submitting the documents, or having.
Even, do you have that document?
Here.
It's been reviewed, yeah, data reviewed, and I just want to make sure y'all have the original back, yeah.
It's pretty standard form, we do it all one time, so we just like to, we use on page two, you still get copied on any decisions, any comments that they have.
Lindsay, if you can talk to the table, I know it's kind of hard until they get that head walk down here at the back, but if the case of rain, all that mud and stuff gets on the street, they need to make sure they get that cleaned up.
John was down, spoke to office for Christmas about that, that the, some of the times it's been a bit awkward with when they moved there and then some rain that we have, but yeah, they're working at some, it's all the patching area, we don't get any work done. They're already planning on that or something.
Anyone else have any questions, comments on the three annexes, one, two, and three? So the old courthouse will be fully inhabited again by May, March, or April? Looking at April now, realistically, probably two thousand sixteen.
I think April, April time's pretty good, before we were speaking with John, the superintendent, so they feel pretty comfortable about that a lot.
That's, that's what to go with now, to April. Well, thank you, appreciate all the work you put in and, and, with the, have you heard anything lately from historical on the roof or anything like that?
We're going ahead with the standing seam roof, we're taking the profile, little, seeing the tiles up on the top, that'll be on the tower, but we're going to go with the standing seam metal roof, and we've actually had the approval on that. Which is the right decision, absolutely.
I firmly believe, the other just opens yourself up for more damage as time goes on, and the standing seam roof, continuity from the top over the eave makes tremendous difference. And did you say the tower wouldn't have a?
Yeah, the profile tile, so I'll keep the consistency of what everybody's been seeing for all these years. I just want to make the comments while, but, but it's a big time record, we have a lot.
Well, thank you.
We'll continue together, I know it's tentative, but that's one of the records, it's been a real pleasure.
Well, same here. Item five, Carlos Salazar, ESD number three, request to be the opponent, Carlos Salazar, as commissioner of ESD number three. Anyone, have you, anyone commercial with commissioner Marilis on that? I think he's, I think he's good with it. Go ahead and go, motion, Commissioner Fowles, Mr. Marilis, all in favor? Item six, doesn't take action. Item seven, we're on paper. Item eight, Jody Packard, Wilson County Sheriff, request to student contract with Homewood Door Police Department to house her inmate in the Wilson County jail for forty-nine dollars per day, and they are responsible for paying their medical expenses.
This is not U.R.S., all their U.R.S. will go to Perry County, this is warrants.
Item nine, discuss and take action, ratifying payment of three hundred ninety-five dollars and seven cents for Bancor on December eleventh, two thousand fourteen, to avoid a finance charge.
Yeah, they'll put that on there, and we have paid the bill, but on the left, in order to ward the charge because of the delay of our commissioner's report, I'd watch people that, I just, we got hit with a charge.
Okay. Motion, Commissioner Don, that's second, Commissioner Marilis, all in favor? Item ten, Ricky Marilis, Commissioner Precinct three, A, review and approve purchase of Volvo S C seven five, B, Blue Drum, oil contractor, head to the end, two four, oh one, three six, from Bronco Equipment Company, to Bancor South, buy and board in the amount of fifty thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars. Question, Commissioner Marilis, second, Commissioner Gomez, all in favor? Item B, review and approve purchase of a used two thousand fourteen Volvo T P two four zero R, pneumatic roller, eight wheel, S and N three two five one seven four, of Bronco Equipment Company, for Bancor South, buy and board in the amount of sixty-four thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars for precinct number three. Item twelve, Eva Martinez, county clerk, request to be allowed to review her, her off contract for one year, old senior.
Uh, that's actually my official public records, and they basically had a change of name, and so we just want to go on with the new name.
What's the new name?
Xerox, it should, it was ACS.
Oh, okay.
So I just want to make sure, make record of it, that is not right.
Okay, Commissioner, Mr. Gomez, all in favor? Item thirteen, time to report.
I started putting in back in Texas in November, I put one point four million back in, and in December, I missed the topic, so it's looking good.
Item four, are there reviews?
Yes, Judge, um, Justice of the peace, number four, all this is coming out of the county judge, as we know, so we did a review of all this, and all matters are in order, we can see anything that was not in order, that's just the report, we went over in four, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
Questions, Ellen? Gomez, second, Commissioner Marilis, all in favor? Item fifteen, payroll. Item fifteen, may roll personally.
Um, Marcus Salivo, he resigned twelve twenty-one, two thousand and fourteen, department forthcoming as a correction officer. Noel, the, the party, uh, was hired twelve eleven, two thousand and fourteen, department forthcoming for two thousand fifty dollars a month as a correction officer. Aurora Garcia was hired twelve fifteen, two thousand and fourteen, department three hundred, ten dollars an hour as a part-time JP, number one clerk.
Questions, Ellen? Mr. Gomez? All in favor?
Dirt route.
Dirt route.
Want your overbank bag?
He'll send it flying to you.
We'll go back to item seven, presentation of Black.
First, I would like to thank you for all sixteen years of dedication and hard work. Officer Black says, County of Wilson, State of Texas, presented to him Marvin Queen. Congratulations on your well-deserved retirement after sixteen years of outstanding service as county judge. In sincere gratitude for the assistance and guidance and outstanding leadership he provided to Wilson County. You have set an example to be followed in the future and be cherished by those of us fortunate enough to have experienced it ourselves. January one, nineteen ninety-nine, December thirty-one, two thousand and fourteen.
I just want to say that, uh, been, been an honor and privilege to work with all of you. Sheriff Miss Eva's been here from Getville, uh, from the garden. It's, uh, we, we, many of us, time to time, we didn't see eye to eye on things, but that's the reason there's more than one person involved. And I think our county is better off, not because of me, but because of the work together from, from each of the department heads and the employees of the county, citizens of the county, volunteers and all the different organizations. And, uh, I just can't say how blessed I've been to be a part of it. Thank you, officer.
Judge, I have to sort my comments from now. In behalf of me and my staff, we would like to thank the judge for working so well together all of these years. We've enjoyed a wonderful working relationship and we will dearly miss you. Thank you for everything you've done for this.
You know, uh, one thing I meant to say that I did not say, that, um, whether you're Republican or Democrat or Independent or whatever, always keep the goal of what's best for the people. And, uh, you know, we all have some basic things that we believe very strongly and we need to stand by those things. But for the good of the people, when there is a, a way to compromise and work together, everybody comes out ahead. I think, and, and Miss Eva, I have depended so hard, so much on her, particularly in the probate world, uh, she's been here for years. I was a kid when she first came. And, uh, we, and, but I'm really and truly, it, it's a, it's a really neat thing to be able to rely on people. We have a lot of good attorneys in the area that, uh, that you can trust and know that they want to live up to their, uh, that they come in on the probate and things of that sort. So, you, you just understanding and trusting in people is, is really makes things work better.
Yes, Judge, I never had a chance to make my comment on the item two, so I'd like to comment now. I was present, uh, at the commissioner's court meeting when you, uh, took over the first, the first commissioner's court meeting, I remember that, sixteen years ago. But your sixteen-year career as county judge might not have happened if you had run for the job as an independent. Uh, that was his intention until he was visited by three wise men. Who told him that he'd better enter the Republican primary, even though it meant opposing a, an incumbent judge. And of course, the rest is history, he won handily. And did you ever have a challenger?
Oh, yes.
You did? I couldn't remember the last time you had a challenger. At any rate, uh, I'm glad that you persuaded to run as a Republican and not as an independent.
Well, our main goal has always been, uh, it, I know it sounds canned or whatever, but the best quality of life we can have with the least impacted in the county is what all the strive to do. And, and I think that, uh, I noticed that, uh, over the years, our, our tax rate's been in the point four all the way, it's been in point four ever since I've been in office. Some of the neighboring counties have been six, seven, eight. And then the Eagle Ford now, theirs is below ours. And, and those counties have been blessed with a ton of the Eagle. And, uh, but the consistency of everyone staying, uh, and, and like I said, it, it's a, it's been a team effort for everybody and, and I, I hope that, I, I got a handout the other day that Wilson County in the ACOG area, the twelve county ACOG area in the Southside of Merrick County, had eighty-four percent homeownership. That was the highest of all of the counties. That's including Gillespie, uh, Kamau, Wadu, uh, Medina, you know, it, it, and to me, that's, that's a, that's a great thing. Our household income was like fourth behind, uh, Gillespie County, uh, Kamau, uh, those counties. So, out of twelve counties, that's, that's really a significant thing, that. Now, we, we rank down some in the degreed people, but we've got a lot of capable people that, uh, that let, uh, schools get in the way of their education. But anyway, we go, thank all of you very much. And we're ready now for field. Everybody had an opportunity to read the bill? Mr. Gomez, Morales, all in favor? And, and return and, and make that back. Thank you.